April fifth, uh, planning board, um, hearing for, uh, the, uh, continued, uh, hearing for, uh, the, uh, the two subdivision plan. Now, the last time we met, the, uh, we, we received general, uh, comments from the public and, uh, tonight, we are mostly expecting to discuss, uh, technical aspects of the subdivision plan and you're all welcome to, uh, comment on those technical plans, but we would like to be limited to those technical, uh, issues.
More time?
Jeff from first off back engineering. We had a review comments from, uh, Peter, will you? And, uh, I'll be, my son sent you a, uh, included letter here, uh, basically, the following presents were made, uh, pertaining to Pete's, uh, questions, uh, frame panel number three, it's been laid to six foot diameter on sheets three through five. Uh, the grade number two, the grading lots four through six have been revised to direct runoff towards the proposed roadway. And a note has been added to the grading plans that the lot shall be graded to direct runoff to the roadway. Runoff rates to the existing lower area at catch bases have been analyzed, reduced to runoff rates to this area from pre to post construction and, uh, analysis has been included in the attached drainage addendum. And number three, the inlet capacity calculation for catch basin one is part of the post development drainage analysis of the lower area with catch basin one. As the outlet as shown on appendix B three through of the drainage cowl. Number four and up, an updated long-term operations maintenance plan has been added to the drainage addendum, which indicates that the homeowners association will be responsible for the maintenance of the drainage basin and catch basin one. Uh, number five, a note has been added to the grading sheet concerning the final grading of each lot to be reviewed for conformance with the, uh, with the revised subdivision plans. And number six, a separate waiver request has been attached, and you have got to read that in a minute. And seven, the updated development impact statement addressing the anticipated traffic and subdivision basin have been included in the drainage addendum, which you have a copy of. And the only question, the only waiver we're asking is, uh, a waiver from section forty-two, forty-four to allow the centerline grades within the right of way to be more than five feet below existing grade. Due to the existing topography conditions at the site, the waiver is necessary. Existing topography drops down from council oak's way approximately ten feet, then rises up to a steep hill approximately twenty feet. Fill required for the first three hundred fifty feet of the roadway as proposed in the as the proposed, uh, roadway drops off down to existing one at two percent grade. The remainder of the roadway will go up at two and a half percent grade, which will result in a twelve-foot cut in the existing hill. The proposed design of the roadway will require both cuts and fills to the existing topography and will be providing a uniform transition of the proposed pavement from negative to positive grades. Basically, that's what, uh, the revisions we have. I guess Pete has not had a chance to, uh, further, uh, to address the, uh, comments, so we'll have to wait for his comment on that. Um, basically tried to address everything he was concerned about. The, uh, other than that, uh, what were your questions?
Any comments from the public or questions from the board?
May I offer a question?
If you do.
This is with regard strictly to the plan by, by the way, it's Morris Joyce, three nine nine Oak Street. Uh, they have presented to you a beautiful set of plans, but as of tonight, the engineer or the petitioner had never seen the original layout plan of the area by Dr. Wood in eighteen sixty-four. I provided him with a copy of that plan tonight that shows all the lots were laid out as individual lots along the way. And that way was also an individual lot. Now, as I've told the board before, my specialty is very difficult land titles. I've been qual- tri- qualified as a title expert and I've looked at the title to this land going back to the proprietorships. The Wood family, who were the original, uh, did the original layout and prior to the Wood family, it was Whitmash family, uh, from the proprietors to the Whitmashes. They never deeded out this one roadway. And as far as I can determine, the roadway which they intended to use as part of their development is still owned by the Wood family. Their D's read on the road, not by the road, so the sideline of the Y is the end of their boundary. They don't own the roadway. And those are my simple comments.
You can see that an attorney would have to, uh, clarify that matter.
It's a, it's a record claim that hasn't been used as a basis for the plans before you.
Other comments?
John Cottor, two ten minute half. Um, what's the plan for removing the gravel from the site?
Hold it up.
Okay, so with the ancient way, what's, what's being, what's being held?
You mean this here?
No.
This is the way that exists right now, we're not touching.
To what, to what point?
Right up to the edge, right?
Right up to the edge, okay, you're going to maintain up around that side also?
This is the cut.
You mean cut, sorry.
Pushed down.
From what point?
Yes, right away, pushed down.
So this is my land.
Yes.
So what's going to happen to my hill?
Nothing. General. I'm not going to do anything to it.
Is it just going to drop off straight?
Yes.
Just like you got on your side? You're going to maintain on the other side?
Yes.
Okay.
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 All right.
I just wanted to clarify something that was discussed, you know, when we got in touch on this briefly, um, there were talks about, there were a lot of bodies or dead, worried about, um, homonings that were there. This is, uh, going to be briefly, uh, from Governor Bradford's journal. This is sixteen twenty-one. Soon after, they, um, signed the treaty with Massasoia, having in some sort of order their business at home, it was thought that they should be somewhere abroad to see their new friends, Massasoia, and bestow upon him some gratuity to bind him faster onto them and also that hereby they might view the country and see it, what manner he lived, what strength he had about him and how the waves were to his place if at any time they should have occasion. So the second of July, they sent Mr. Edward Winslow and Mr. Hopkins with the force head squanto for their guide, who they gave him a suit of clothes and a horseman's coat with some other small things which were kindly accepted, but they found what short the commons and came both weary and hungry home. So this is a little bit of a condensed version, probably done in the late eighteen hundreds from Bradford's journal, what was, uh, was found. So that, they're describing the importance of what they were looking for. So this is right after they signed the treaty, okay, sixteen twenty-one, they arrived in sixteen twenty. Here they're talking about how they crossed over the river, the Ton River, okay? Next morning, they crossed the river and turned south, following its course closely and noting that it was cleared and had formerly been cultivated land all the way. But the farms were deserted and grown up to weeds and the frames of the numerous Indian houses stood madless and unattended. Bradford's journal recounts the situations and the reason vividly. They found you soil good and ye people not many being dead and abundantly wasted in ye late great mortality which fell in these parts about three years before ye coming of the English. So this is sixteen twenty, when the English came, three years before that would be sixteen seventeen, so four hundred years later, we're talking about developing on that, which is probably one of the greatest, uh, pre-colonial discoveries in the United States, okay? Because now they knew how weak the, the Wampanoags were, okay? And this is probably right on these fields. When thousands of them died, they not being able to bury one another, their skulls and bones were found in many places lying still above ground where their houses and dwellings had been. A very speck, very sad spectacle to behold. The English trail they followed from the Segregante River south is perpetuated in the present route of Elm Street. Four hundred years later, we're talking about developing on the site, where almost a third of the town's population now lied. So many dead that survivors couldn't bury them.
My name is Roger Gray Fox. Disrogious. I represent the Poconocet Nation. As Brian explained to you, that, that is one big burial site.
It's not a burial site. What's a burial site? That's what I wanted to clarify, I'm sorry about this.
It is a burial site.
That's why I came back.
Whether they buried them under the ground or they died on top of the ground, when they went by, it was all bones shining, they went and seen what it was, it was all bones. The flesh, guts, everything remained on that soil. And that's part of that, that's why that gravel cannot be removed. We've got to work something out somehow, maybe, maybe you can bury, I'll put the houses down below, it's gone, the pass is gone here. And, and maybe you, you can pull something out and sell it for less than can. Up the top, you'll farm it, it'll always be preserved. This is, this is what's got to be done, really, morally, which is right. Well, I'm going to tell you something. Whoever is responsible to dig that up, I wouldn't want to be in their shoes because the spirits are not happy. I'm not threatening you. I don't wish harm on you or anyone. I'm telling you a fact that I wouldn't want to be in the person's shoes, what will happen after that. And not that I wish, I don't wish any harm to you or anybody here. I'm just telling you a fact, the spirits are not happy. I've gone up here and asked them to help me and ask God to help me, and it's only happened twice. I've never had that happen anywhere and I can show you in my camera that, that the rays, uh, came right down in front of me, right there. And it was only when I would look at the field and say, God, please protect this, please, and it happened. It happened last year and it happened a year before and I'll show you on my camera. That, and it hadn't rained out that day and the rainbows just shot straight down. I'll show you.
Sir?
So.
I appreciate your, your comments, but again, uh, this evening's issues were related to...
First of all, they found artifacts up there. I was up there for, for, I think it was sixty-four shovel holes, all right? They went deep enough, they were supposed to be two by two square. The first day there, the media was there. I'll never forget this, when they were digging a hole, laid on the ground, he put his arm to reach the bottom, that's three feet. And I said, oh, that's good, wow, great. So when they left, they started digging holes much smaller, digging them round. So the next day, I was in Florida, I went to the mill store and I got two yardsticks and I marked it. This is all recorded, they have it up Mass Historical and at the archaeologists up, up in Mass. And, uh, one foot, two foot, and you could see it, I laid it across the top and I dropped it in the hole. I gave all that to the soil board, I don't know what's happened to that, there were five folders. And when I presented that night to the soil board, I said the caption on each one, I didn't check, had the whole file. That's all in the minutes, what happened to it? I wanted this board to look at it, where is it? It's very important that you look at it before you make any decision, really. You're welcome. Please, please don't let anything happen to that land. That's very sacred land. I mean, I feel that is the second best productive land in this country. The first is in New York and I feel with all my heart is because the spirits, they die there, they farm there and they're so content that it's being farmed and that's all I want to see happen to that, it's having fun. Please do not disturb that. And it's not a threat, I'm just telling you a fact, how I feel.
Fact and how you feel are two very different things.
Well, I'm just telling you how I feel. I am not threatening you or anyone because I don't wish any harm to you or anyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Sure.
Um, I don't, I don't know if you're signing with, if I have the power to argue it right away. Jesse, where is your position on that or where does?
Basically, I'll go research it to make sure it, uh, I don't think it's on our deed.
Okay.
Our, our deed.
It's in your chair that kind of lost cena.
Okay. I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll go back and we will do it, and if there's a question, I will, we will con- uh, contact an attorney and we will resolve the issue.
And I think we should probably continue to listen another day until we get this situation.
It's fine.
I'll make that motion immediately.
May I, though?
Yes.
Continuing it doesn't mean that we have to open this up to discussion again. Once the deed problem's rectified, which is the property issue, that inch by the way has changed hands from builder to builder to homeowner to homeowner. If my property has a problem, then so does everybody else's that cross that right way, so.
That's correct.
Thank you. So we'll check that deep, but we don't need to go through this again, I don't believe, I'm sorry, I'm sick, but, you know, it's, at this point, I really can't deal with any more of that stuff.
Is that something that would be put in your disclosure then? Are you going to tell the potential buyers? That, because this is all documented in history, are you just going, are you just going to forget that that actually happened?
If the title was...
I mean, we don't have, I'm not, I understand, we don't, you want to move forward, but are you going to deceive the buyers and not put that in your disclosure statement that thousands of people died in that one area?
Are you sure it's that piece of land?
Yes.
Every year, it's not the ones that are right into the left.
The town and state have already documented around that, that around that tree was the Cass village.
They were dying so fast.
And then Bradford's journal...
Mr. Scoobes, hold on, please, are, are, the investigations that the state has conducted do not support your claims?
The investigation from the state, the archipelago, that was, that was a, that was an exploratory dig and they do not describe in their documents how far they actually dug, which is what Roger was saying, I've read. Okay, the state has already declared that, your town has declared that that, where the tree is, was where the village was. You've al- you've already established that. And the historians will, it's already here, it's in, this is in a, this is, this is in a library. I, I mean, are we, we going to, alternative truth? Is that working, we're going to come up with something different so that it fits?
Do that?
They, they found artifacts up there, they found flakes, I don't know if you know what flakes are. That's when they make the arrowheads. All the flakes fall. They don't go out to the woods to make flakes, they make it right in their village. In their weetoes outside. They actually lived there, they died there, there's no question in the will. That's one big cemetery, you might call it. Yes?
I'd ask you a question.
Yes.
Do you have a different argument over another argument other than this is sacred land? Because we've gone through a list for two, two sessions already, or three sessions. And I was just wondering, do you have a different argument other than...
Well, look, the last time with Long...
We understand it's sacred land. We get your message, okay? That, that, that's your opinion, it may not be our opinion.
Well.
So if you have another argument, I'd like to hear it.
Okay. The last time with, that's when he backed up. Long Bill Tones, okay? We wrote, we got permission from the federal government to get penetrating radar out there, okay? They had it down in August, I've got, I've got the letter, I can show you. And they said, when you're ready to do it, we'll do it. I think it was down in South Carolina, somebody else, the best in the country was going to read it. Long Bill Tones backed up and that was the end of that. Can I tell you, it was never done, why don't we get it done then?
If I get it done, will that put this to bed?
Well, you'll help me, yes.
You'll help, that's not...
Well, they'll determine what, what it is. You want to agree to that? Yeah, that's what I figured.
Now, I missed options four years ago.
Up in Gettysburg, the bodies aren't there, but they die there. Do they do anything with that land? No, these people died there and their bodies are still there.
But it's not been over for the last four years.
Pardon?
Have you tried to at least get some money together through different sources?
Yes, I've been trying, okay, but it's a lot of money. Gillie paid too much for that, he told me that himself, because he was going to get the money for the gravel, okay? He knows that and it's hard to get that kind of money for six acres on farmland. I've been trying, I'm still trying, I'm, I'm, I'm working on something right now with, with someone that maybe they could come up with it all. And I, I've got other people out there trying to get, I, I've been trying and Gillie's been very patient in waiting and I really appreciate it. Have a good rapport with Gillie and, and, but it can't be done. Those are grave sites. You, you don't understand that, I mean, it's there in history, but I, 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 I don't understand. First of all, Massasoia, under that Council Oak, agreed, first of all, he fed the pilgrims. He agreed from under that Council Oak to leave the pilgrims stay there. So it all started right here, this town should be very happy how historical it is. And I, I wanted before with the state, when Kennedy was living, to get it federally recognized. They weren't ready at the time and I'd be willing to do it again. This, this town has history that they don't have nowhere else in this country. Down in Jamestown, Virginia, that was the first settlement, didn't make it. They even invited and paid for us, Poconocets, to go down there, went down there two or three times. And, and Pocahontas, she's, she, her great, great grandmother was Pocahontas and she's the, the chief of that tribe and a minister today. But it didn't make it, but it made it here. So what I'm trying to say, this town, I, I don't understand how come you don't realize the history that's here.
Thank you, sir, we, we do realize the history, but we also do realize realities as it relates to land development.
Well, I think for six acres, I mean, all the rest of it's going to be preserved, so why not get the six acres preserved?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to continue the proper hearing, um, the...
I'm going to draw that motion. Actually, I will make a motion to approve the subdivision as presented, subject to the title being clear.
A second.
Something about historical commission, because I represent the...
Okay. Throw out the motion for the moment?
I'd be willing to do that, but that, that motion was so old after this speaker.
Okay, my name is Carol, I'm staying on ninety-three Perk Terrace. I do represent the Historical Commission. Um, let be on record that we did have this letter, a copy of this letter was given to the planning board in February and we haven't met in the past two months. Um, one of the facts that we did want to include before we read the letter is that, uh, since nineteen seventy-two, the Dyton Historical Commission has recommended in the master plan that the Council Oak site be the first priority site to preserve, protect in the town. And that's been since nineteen seventy-two. So this is the letter that we came together with in February and all agreed unanimously. Dear Planning Board members, the Dyton Historical Commission has discussed at length the need for preservation of the Council Oak area, again threatened by residential development. This area and the remains of that ancient tree are valuable and irreplaceable historical resources connected to the earliest history of democracy in America and full consideration of its place in history should be included in our discussions. Our town seal reflects the importance of the great tree. The Council Oak stands over the village of the Indians and their huts with Dyton Rock, the Ton River and strawberries. Under that tree, Massasoia offered his welcoming hand to the pilgrims who raised a democracy in the new world that inspired the founding documents of this nation. Without that hand, there would be surely be a different history of the United States. The seal symbolizes and the tree and the land exemplify eternal ties with our nation's past, present and future. We who are officially charged with preserving and sharing that history cannot let this irreplaceable link to the birth of American democracy be lost without expressing our firm belief that the value of cultural heritage cannot be measured in dollars, not in property taxes or real estate profits. Once we lose this site where those who founded New England were first welcomed, can we argue that the revenue or profit were worth it? Much of the surrounding area has already fallen to the changes of time and residential development. There's very little left of the sacred land that holds the remnants of the Council Oak. Yet the Native Americans still meet there to worship and to pray, some three hundred and five years after Dyton became a town. They have watched the sacred land shrink in size as the cultural heritage embodied in the land and tree are neglected. The unanimous Historical Commission and town historian Myrna De Santos strongly support any and all efforts to protect and preserve the Council Oak site. We respectfully request that all parties consider the importance of this site as a significant factor in all discussions and transactions. We urge you to use your creativity, patience and generosity in planning to preserve this historic site. At the very spot, the most successful immigrants in history planted a seed from which the greatest nation in history has grown. Without a doubt, that is worth protecting and preserving. Respectfully, the Dyton Historical Commission, James Di Aruda, Chairman, Myrna Santos, Co-Chef, Patricia Olson, Joanna Seem, and then myself, Carol Beda. And, um, also this, I was just a little fence of that, like in the town hall itself, in our main room that we use for meetings, we noticed that there was not only the flag with the seal of the Council Oak site, but also three images of the Council Oak site as well in that main room. Also with the bicentennial, this was the site where all the events were held in nineteen twelve, where the governor came and all the different concerts and different things were held under that tree. And the last thing is, um, when they had the two hundred fiftieth celebration, they had the Council Oak plate that was developed for that reason. So it shows the history of always preserving the site, thank you very much.
So as you know, the tree is going to be preserved.
Yes.
And approximately, um, ninety thousand square feet is going to be donated to the town. That surrounds the tree.
It is, it's, it's around the tree, it's down there.
Before we make the motion, I'd like to point out that the town has a, the planning board has a specific, uh, requirement and that is to do what is lawful and, and what is, is according to the town bylaws. And according to the town bylaws, this subdivision does meet the requirements. So for us to, to deny those, this subdivision would may not be in the, it may be in the best interest of all of those who have, have spoken this evening, but it is ultimately not in the best interest... but it is ultimately not in the best interest of the town because we would open ourselves to lawsuits and legal ramifications that would be detrimental to the town's not only fiscal health, but also the way we are able to conduct our business. So I understand all, I think all of us on the board understand everything that you have pointed out in this and previous hearings, but it is incumbent upon us to do what is legal. And after having said that, I'd like to entertain any motions.
There's already been a motion, I said, I really...
I will do the ground penetrating radar test. Once I do that, I'm going to ask for the approval of the board. If that's possible, I'll hold off starting construction until that test is done.
Thank you.
After that, I am all done with this. Understand?
Understand.
Yes?
Just a disclosure statement, I'll look at that as more... I mean, are you going to tell people what happened there or to...
You guys are all motherfucking to come watch.
I mean, I would think if I was to buy a piece of property, that would be something that would deter me from buying it.
Here, let me, when... I don't know, the Wampanoaks aren't here, the ones that, the Saychins and whatever. I've been involved in one of the biggest sites, the biggest site, Middleboro. We found quite a few bodies. We know what we're looking for, we can find them.
We're not saying that there were bodies, nobody knows what happens, happened to the bodies that were lying, thousands of bodies that were lying on top of the ground.
Now, the bodies stood there. I don't know what happened to the bones, they might have, before they cultivated, took the bones and buried them somewhere.
But a third of the town's population lie on these, a third of the town's population today lie dead on those fields from the plague. I would think that anybody wanting to buy a piece of property would want to know that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment that we could, on this...
Okay, I would like to make a motion to reject the waiver from section forty-two forty-four to allow centerline grades within the right of way to be more than five feet below consistent grade.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I may offer a friendly amendment to my original motion that is fully subject to the search to assure a clear title and the completion of the ground penetrating way by the law's law.
Second?
Favor?
Aye.
What's that?
Are you adjourned in the meeting?
No, no.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I mean, don't use running that tape, but you're not doing anything.
I figured it was all hard to hear.
Nah. When they sit down and we adjourn, you know, he just, he just get up and walk around. It was all like that. Love is professional, there's nobody. It's very unprofessional.
You have to write in, you have to get it out. If you became slaves, if you became slaves or anything, that's really right now. That's well-known, that's quite, quite true.
Take care, guys. Take care.
You go over later, we'll get you a CD. They're going to be over there for a meeting, you can probably come around.
Okay.
We're going to burn this first, right?
Yeah.
Is that enough time?
Yeah, it'll be easy.
Okay. I'll make sure you're not breaking your line. All right, take care now.
Dave, we're going, we're going straight to disk.
Oh, okay, this is even better. Okay. So, so I have.
They're meeting, it's recording too soon. They heard me say hello. I can hear that, I can even hear whispers. I can hear you now. They're still recording, I can't hear them. Ask them if they can move over here or something.
Not going to hear pickup, must not say talk.
No, I know.
Are they still running the candidate's night on the thing, or is that just...
Candidate's night's been on, right?
Yeah.
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 It's been running on.
We didn't get, we didn't get it last week.
Three or four different times.
It's still on this week?
Hmm.
Yeah?
As I know.
I haven't touched it.
Yeah. I don't know.
Because Elaine Barrow was asking me, she said, "Well, I didn't get it." I looked, well, she's been a while, she says, "I haven't get it." I said, "Well..."
We're not going to hear what they're doing. Cut it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we can't hear what they're doing.